Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, December 10th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Ms. Joan De Zero, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Don Bittenbender with the Disabled American Veterans. Good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council and staff, Merry Christmas. If we could pray. Dear Heavenly Father, as we enter this season of joy and hope, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts. We thank you for all the wonderful things you've done for our city over this past year and ask for your continued blessings as we end 2024 and go into 2025. Please bless our mayor, our council members, city staff, our police officers and our firefighters and EMS with wisdom and discernment as they all try and do what they believe is best for our city and its residents. Please guide us all as we go into 2025. In Jesus' most precious name, amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, please, yes, stay, no, Mr. No, Don, you actually have to go to the podium and look at us. So, all the people in the room are so important and we're so glad you're here, but there's
You are more important.
No, many more important people at home and they're only going to see you if you look at us.
Oh, okay. My name is Don Bittenbender. I'm the commander of the London Bridge Chapter 27 of Disabled American Veterans here in Lake Havasu City. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you real quickly about our organization. And we have three primary functions that we take care of here in Lake Havasu City. Number, number one is we're available to support veterans in filing claims with the VA from any injuries or diseases that have happened during their time of service. We're located at the 2001 College Drive in the County Municipal Building. Right now, our office is being renovated with an extra space for more privacy when the veterans come to meet with us. So, we're over in Buster Johnson's conference room. Hopefully, we'll be back in the office in two weeks. But we file claims for veterans to help them. The second thing we do is we transport veterans and we transport them from Lake Havasu City to Prescott and to the Phoenix Hospitals. We're currently working on, and hopefully, we can get it in place by the beginning of the year, in transporting veterans from Parker and Court Site up to the new clinic. And thirdly, we're part of the Veterans Resource Team where we support and help veterans financially if there's a need for that and we participate in that. And that's primarily what we do to help veterans in Lake Havasu City and Mojave and in the Pines Counties.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Mr. Bittenbender, for being here. Thank you for all the work that the Disabled American Veterans do for our community and the work that you continue to do for our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item four is our roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
David Diaz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cameron Moses.
Here.
Mayor Kal Sheehy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is the Consent Agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Koch, please.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Ready to vote?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six is the selection of Vice Mayor. City code dictates that on the first meeting of December each year that we elect the Vice Mayor. The Vice Mayor is elected by the members of the City Council for consideration. Obviously, the citizens elect each of us at large and then the council elects the Vice Mayor. I would like to express my gratitude to Vice Mayor Moses for your service over the last year. Thank you for your service as you stepped into the role of Vice Mayor and did a great job, and I appreciate that. With that being said, we would entertain any motions for Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan.
Like to nominate Michelle Lynn.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Councilmember Lynn. Councilmember Lynn, do you have an interest in serving?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, excellent. We have a willing person. We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan. We have a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, and congratulations, Vice Mayor Lynn. All right, so this will be the last time we're in this seating configuration, but we'll just finish the meeting out tonight in this seating configuration. But things will move next, next meeting when we're all together so that the Vice Mayor is next to me if, for some reason, we need to interchange. So, again, congratulations, Vice Mayor Lynn. And please give me a little bit of grace throughout this meeting as I transition my mind from Vice Mayor Moses to Vice Mayor Lynn. All right, item seven is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is announced vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Here in City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment with one regular member and one alternate member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is our City Managers Report. Good evening, Mr. Knudsen.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. It's the last City Manager's Report for 2024, as it's our last City Council meeting this year. I'd like to start with a thank you to Councilmember Cameron Moses for speaking to Lake Havasu High School and Middle School Student Councils about leadership last week. Your message on leading by example, making positive choices and contributing to the community was incredibly impactful for the kids. You've inspired students to embrace responsibility, strive for excellence and become future leaders. We appreciate your dedication to guiding and motivating our youth in Lake Havasu City. Thank you. That's a big deal for us. Congratulations to Jill Eklundberger for 37 years of dedicated service to Lake Havasu City and to our Police Department. Jill is Lake Havasu City's longest, current longest-serving employee and will be retiring as the Executive Assistant in the Police Department. I understand Chief Sterling is a little nervous because she has been such, she's been the backbone of his office and the leadership in the Police Department. But Jill is helping to make the transition a smooth one as we move forward. Thanks to her leadership, her dedication and countless contributions, we have left, she will leave a lasting impact. Thank you for everything you've done and best wishes and a happy retirement. And Lake Havasu City Fire Department honors Captain Kevin Chuck for his retirement and we did that through a ceremonial walkout after 35 years of dedicated service. Captain Chuck took his final walkout from Station 3 on Sunday morning at 0700 hours. Thank you, Captain Chuck, for your leadership and commitment to Lake Havasu City. We wish you happiness, health and adventure in your well-deserved retirement. So, two employees we're sorely going to miss. Lake Havasu City Police Department recently held an award ceremony to recognize the outstanding service of many of our officers, sergeants, detectives, three crime units and our volunteers. This event celebrated their dedication, their professionalism and exceptional contributions to public safety. We extend a heartfelt gratitude and congratulations to all those who are honored for their service and for their excellence. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to keeping our community safe. Crews joined the Marine Corps League for the Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day Ceremony. Just last Saturday, we came together to honor the 83rd anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day with a special remembrance ceremony overlooking the future site of the USS Relic brought to us by the Marine Corps League Detachment 757. So, that'll be the future home of the relic you see in the bottom Mucktown corner there. We reflected, remembered and paid tribute to the heroes of December 7th, 1941. Last week, Mayor Kal Sheehy, Police Chief Troy Sterling and Detective Sergeant Tom Gray were in attendance for the check presentation to Haven Center. Proceeds were raised by the Mojave Seguro Punishers Law Enforcement Motorcycle Club during the 2024 Western Roundup. Through their efforts, they raised an impressive $6,175 for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you to everyone involved for their generous donation and supporting such an important cause. Mayor Sheehy and members of the City Council attended the Radio Central's Annual Community Tree Lighting Ceremony at Wheeler Park. This cherished holiday tradition featured caroling, festive story reading and a special proclamation coming from the mayor. And with the help from our Fire Department, Santa and Mrs. Gloss were also made a magical appearance to lighting the children and spreading holiday cheer. And lastly, don't forget, the Community Dinner is coming up this week. It'll be on December 13th and it'll be held at our usual location, which is the Community Center. The early bird seating is from 4:00 to 5:30. The doors will open at 3:30 for that one, so a half hour early. And the second seating is from 6:00 to 7:30 and the doors for that will open 15 minutes early at 5:45. So, we hope to see the community in attendance and looking forward to another fun event this year. And with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. Move on to item eight, which is our public hearings. We'll have several public hearings during each one of these public hearings. We will open up the, for comment from the public. So, if you'd like to speak on one of these items, we encourage you to do it at that time. When you do come up to the podium, just state your name for the record and then address the council directly. There will be a light indicator on the television screens around the room indicating the amount of time that you have to speak to the council and with indicators when your time is up. We do encourage you to speak during this portion of the meeting if you have anything to contribute to that item because we can have a two-way conversation. After we complete all of our public hearings, we will have a call to the public. That will be an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any item within the jurisdiction of the city, but we won't be able to have a two-way conversation at that time. We'll just be able to listen intently. So, we'll start with item 8.1, which is discussion, excuse me, a Series 6 Bar Liquor License for Rooftop Bar at 1515 Marlboro Drive. Ms. Williams.
Here in City Council, Donald Bradley has applied for a Series 6 Bar Liquor License for Rooftop Bar located at 1515 Marlboro Drive. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid and no objections were received during the 20-day public comment period. This location is properly zoned for a Series 6 Liquor License. I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicant is in attendance tonight to answer any questions from the City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams or the applicant? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion.
But Councilmember Moses.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License is in control. Approve a Series Number 6 Bar Liquor License for Rooftop Bar, 1515 Marlboro Drive.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Diaz. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.2 is a Series 11 Hotel Motel Liquor License, Home to Suites, Lake Havasu, located at 120 Park Avenue. Ms. Williams.
Here in City Council, Andrea Lukowicz has applied for a Series 11 Hotel Motel Liquor License for Home to Suites, Lake Havasu, located at 120 Park Avenue. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid and no objections were received during the 20-day public comment period. The location is properly zoned for a Series 11 Liquor License. I'm also happy to answer any questions on this application and representative from the application is also in attendance tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams or the applicant's representative? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion.
Councilmember Moses.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License is in control. Approve a Series Number 11 Hotel Motel Liquor License for the Home to Suites, Lake Havasu, 120 Park Avenue.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.3 is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Juicy's located at 42 Smoke Tree Avenue South. Ms. Williams.
Here in City Council, Heron Ozkin has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Juicy's located at 42 Smoke Tree Avenue South. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid and no objections were received during the 20-day public comment period. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 Liquor License. Happy to answer any questions and I believe an applicant was going to be available over teams. I don't know if they have joined us if you have any questions for them.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any questions for members of the council for Ms. Williams or an applicant's representative? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License is in control. Approve a Series Number 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Juicy's, 42 Smoke Tree Avenue South.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Diaz. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.4 is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Lady Lee's at 2180 McCulloch Boulevard North. Ms. Williams.
Here in City Council, Lisa Lee has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Lady Lee's located at 2180 McCulloch Boulevard North. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid and no objections were received during the 20-day public comment period. And the location is properly zoned for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License. Happy to answer any questions and the applicant is also in attendance tonight to answer any questions from the City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams or for the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion.
Councilmember Moses.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License is in control. Approve a Series Number 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Lady Lee's, 2180 McCulloch Boulevard North.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.5 is Ordinance Number 24-1351, Amending Lake Havasu City Code Title 14 Zoning Development Code, Sections 14.05.03, Standard Regulatory Procedures, to add timeframes for administrative completeness of zoning applications and 14.05.04-K5, Zoning Map Amendment Protest, to exclude government-owned property from protest property area. Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council tonight. This particular bill, this set of Development Code text amendments are required for compliance with Arizona Senate Bill 1162, signed by the Governor with direction take effect on January 1st, 2025. Senate Bill 1162's new state regulations are summarized as follows. Number one requires removing all government-owned property from inclusion and calculations of area required for zoning protest petitions, including rights aways, parcels and some easements that do not overlay onto privately owned land. Number two, it requires establishment of timeframes for zoning application completeness, determinations and for final approval or denial thereof, including extensions thereto. And finally, number three, a third part of this bill relates to requiring an annual housing needs assessment report and an every-five-year housing needs assessment, which does not require changes to our development code and is currently being addressed by the Arizona League of Cities and Towns to provide a collective solution for its member organizations, which does include Lake Havasu City. Mr. Mayor, that's the summary. If you have any specific questions on the contents of the bill, I can answer those questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Yeah, so this is just an example of the state thinking that they know a little bit better. And so, this is a requirement to comply with that state law that changed. This item was also heard before our Planning and Zoning Commission and was recommended for approval by a vote of seven to zero at the November 20th, 2024 meeting. Hopefully, the league is able to find that collective solution so we can comply with the components of it. But that's where we find ourselves today. So, are there any questions or comments from members of the council for Mr. Gilbert? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan.
Motion.
Please.
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 24-1351, Amending Lake Havasu City Code Sections 14.05.03 and 14.05.04-K5.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.6 is construction contract for the Site 6 Fishing Dock Replacement Project to Bellingham Marine Industries, Inc. Good evening, Mr. Hart.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I apologize for the slight delay there. Thank you for your patience. So, I'm here to talk to you about an exciting project. This is our Site 6 Fishing Dock Replacement Project. This is a discussion and action item for a potential award of a construction contract on our, for this project. For those of you that maybe are not familiar exactly where this dock slash pier is located, it's actually located on the southwestern point of our beautiful island there. You can see it as it's highlighted here. The dock itself is used quite extensively. It's a very popular dock that has served well over the years with lots of folks fishing, but it is in need of repair with a lot of maintenance being done, but it can only keep up so long and keep it alive. So, this is a great timing for this project. As you are aware, we went out to bids. We started out with an engineer's estimate of approximately $1,480,000 with an add alternate, which would involve the installation of new dock covers. I can't think of the term. I apologize right now. I'm going to say dock covers. Canopies, there we go. One bid was received from Bellingham Marine Industries. The base bid came in at $1,557,138 and then the add alternate to replace those, those seven canopies was $157,126. The, as you are aware, this is funded through the Mojave County American Rescue Act plan and there was $1.6 million available for that. So, we were happy that the base bid came in just under that. The project's schedule is approximately 180 calendar days. We anticipate this, should you award this project tonight, we anticipate the completion to be in June of 2025. And with that, I am recommending the base bid be awarded to Bellingham Industries and we'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. A question I have is the, so we're not doing the alt, at alt, so we won't have canopies in this area then?
It is true, we're not doing the additive alt, but we do believe that we could salvage the existing canopies. So, when they go to remove the pier out, the Parks and Recs has said they'll take a serious look at the current canopies. They believe they can, they can do some sanding and some cleanup and some repainting and possibly reinstall them.
Yeah, I think the canopies are an important amenity out there that those folks use. So, that's good that we'll be able to repurpose what we have. And then I'd also would like to just thank Supervisor Johnson, who really led the effort for us to get these ARPA dollars from his allocation of the ARPA money. If you didn't know, today is actually Supervisor Buster Johnson Day in Lake Havasu City. So, we named it that day today in recognition of his service to our Metropolitan Planning Organization at our meeting this afternoon. So, all day long, it's his day and we honored him as such. But thank you for taking the lead on that and actually making this project come to fruition with a funding opportunity for us to do that. Are there any questions or comments for members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or motion.
I'd like to make a motion if there's no, if there's no discussion.
Yeah, please do. Councilmember Diaz.
I'd like to move forward to the bid for the Site 6 Fishing Dock Project to Bellingham Marine Industries, Inc. in the amount of $1,557,138.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Diaz, a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.7, Selection of Market Comparator Organizations to be used as relevant benchmarks for compensation and classification study being conducted by public sector personnel consultants. Dr. Kimmelton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay. Tonight, we're going to be asking you to approve the market comparator cities that our consultant has recommended based on the research that we've done. But prior to doing that, I've had a lot of questions about our compensation and classification study that you all approved a few council sessions ago. And so, I just wanted to address some of the things that have come up, particularly about what a study is and isn't. And contrary to popular opinion, it's not Bobby deciding I want to give myself a raise. When we look at our, our compensation and classification, there's actually a science behind it and we are trying to make recommendations that are data-based. So, we're going to kind of outline for you tonight some of the issues that we're facing, some of the issues that you will be faced with in terms of how we decide what is appropriate in terms of the market comparators and how we decide how we're going to address compensation and classification going forward. So, what does our data tell us? When we go ahead and look at the data, one of the things that we start off with is looking at what are our vacancy numbers? How many vacancies do we have typically? And on average, our vacancies per month average between 25 and 31 or 32 vacancies, depending on what time of year and, and what's going on. When I arrived here three years ago, our vacancies were at 65. So, we've put a lot of effort into filling positions and getting our vacancies to a manageable number. Well, that only has significance if you compare it to our market and say, well, how many vacancies do they typically have? And one of the things that we looked at was the low comparator cities of our current market and the highs. And they averaged between 19 vacancies. And this last month, one of our comparator cities had as high as 52 vacancies. We also looked, we separated out police and fire because as you may or may not be aware, currently, we have 11 vacancies in our police department, which is an extremely high number of vacancies. So, we looked and our market comparison cities have on average between two and 19 vacancies in police and around two or three vacancies in fire. And so, what that tells us when we're looking at that is everybody's in the same boat. So, what is happening is, in essence, we're stealing employees from each other. And so, that then becomes a buyer's market. Where can I find the best perceived value in terms of total compensation? And do I want to go there? And there's lots of factors that go into that, but we'll take a look at that. One of the things that we looked at is our turnover rate. Currently, our turnover rate averages 10.70%. That's an extremely high turnover for a municipality. Turnover should average, healthy turnover should be somewhere between 3% and 5%. So, you can see that our actual turnover in the city is almost double, maybe triple what we would like it to be. So, then I started looking and saying, okay, if our turnover is that high, So then I started looking and saying, okay, if our turnover is that high, where are people going? And you'll see that the reasons for our turnover vary. We have people that are leaving us because they retire. We have people that are leaving us because we terminated them, rate of pay, the type of work they're doing. There are other factors, family requirements, illness, those kinds of things that we look at. But the two highest reasons that we're given, and we do this through a series of exit interviews when people leave, we ask them, why are you leaving us? What they're telling us is they're either leaving for a better job, or the most critical issue is they're leaving because of the cost of living in Lake Havasu City. Now, both of those things are different than rate of pay, but they're related to rate of pay. So one of the things you have to take a look at is, okay, well, what does that mean in terms of reasons why people leave? And over 50% of the terminations that we had during this last year, over 50% of them were based on those two reasons, better job or cost of living. So those are issues that we're faced with. What that also tells me is that when we hire people, typically, they are continuing to look to say, what's out there and can I find a better opportunity somewhere? And that varies from person to person, depending on what it is they need for their situation or their family's situation. But there's more, because when I look at the turnover rate and the reasons people leave, one of the things that I looked at is how many of those people left during the first 365 days of employment? Over half of those terminations, there were 61 terminations last year, over half of those people left during the first 365 days that they were employed by the city. Some of those people left after they accepted the job before they ever started work for us. Some of those people came to work for us but did not complete their probation, some because they didn't meet the probationary requirements, others because they left for that better job opportunity, or in some instances, they told us, we can't afford to live in Lake Havasu City. So that was a problem. Some left by our choice, but the bulk of the people left of their own volition. And I can tell you, today alone, I had four more terminations turned in, some due to retirement and some people leaving for other job opportunities to do that. So the problem is not getting better, it's getting worse. So then I looked and said, well, what about the people who stay here? And so we looked, and there are people who stay here for a variety of reasons. They have family here, they love Lake Havasu City, they love the lifestyle here, they value the, the opportunity to work for the city. And so we hear a lot of positive things from our employees about why they work here. And pay was not ever a consideration. People stay here for other reasons. But what is most concerning is we looked at the number of people who are currently employed by us who are eligible for retirement. That means if they wanted to today, they could say, I've had enough, I'm leaving, I'm going to retire. Currently, we have 16 Arizona State Retirement System eligible retirees, and we have 12 police and fire who are eligible for retirement through PSPRS. Those are not people in the drop, those are just people who said, if I wanted to leave today, I could. I looked at the drop, and basically, the way the drop operates is when you enter the drop, you are, in essence, being retired on the job, not by your actions, but by the retirement system, with the understanding that at the end of five years or seven years, you're going to leave and take your full retirement. We have currently 19 police and firefighters who are, are in the drop. They are not included in the first number that I gave you. And then we looked and said, well, how many people could leave this city within the next five years? We have 31 individuals who are ASRS eligible, we have 16 police officers who are eligible, and we have 19 firefighters who are eligible. What that count is, total of all three of those categories, we have 31 ASRS people who could retire, 24 police officers, and 42 firefighters who could leave us. So what we've got are issues on both ends. We have a recruitment issue with people coming in and not staying, almost like a revolving door, they're leaving. And then on the other hand, we have a great deal of institutional knowledge and a lot of experience that could walk out the door within the next five years. That's a problem for us in terms of how do we bring in people, get them trained, get them educated, so that they can take the place of the people who could considerably leave? Now, I'm not suggesting all of those people that I included in those numbers are going to leave, I'm just letting you know that they have the ability to leave if they choose to. That is almost 40% of our total workforce is eligible to walk out the door. And so we are looking at that, saying, okay, other than wringing my hands and worrying about it, what else have we been doing? And if you look up on the screen, you'll see the kind of effort we've been putting into recruiting people and to keeping people. We've amped up our advertising, we advertise in the print media, we go to industry-specific job boards, and then we have even paid to boost our ads so that they appear first before anyone else's do. We use social media, we've developed commercials that have been shown on, like Channel 12 in the valley, we've geofenced our commercials to target audiences that we think would be interested in our jobs. We advertise on governmentjobs.gov, which pushes out to all of the job boards like Indeed and Monster and those kinds of things. We've advertised with our local colleges. We go to MCC, we've gone to ASU, we've also, colleges that have degree-specific programs that we're looking to attract people from those degrees. We've gone to those universities and colleges to their alumni associations and advertised in their college information. And I'll come back to the apprenticeship information. We've had job fairs, we've had general job fairs, we've worked with Arizona at Work, we've tried to put together specific, career-specific. Chief Paloffis recently held a career session for firefighters interested in coming into the fire department. Chief Sterling has been doing the same thing with the police department. We've had targeted things that we've done in terms of referral bonuses and signing bonuses and certification pay and stipend pay for people that have very specific job skills that we're searching for. We've used our Oracle platform to go out and do talent searches and referrals. We've given referral bonuses to employees who bring us candidates who are qualified. Most recently, and you all have been involved in approving our ability, we've identified the opportunity for an apprenticeship program. We're now looking at not only the apprenticeship program we're doing in the police department, we're looking at an apprenticeship program in our fire department, where we're taking people from the CTE program, bringing them to a higher level of skill, bringing them into the fire department as apprentices, and then investing the money to train them to become firefighter paramedics. We've also looked at internships through the local universities, we've done job share programs, we have several former employees who we've brought back to work part-time to fill positions that we're in desperate need of. And I think one of the most important things as we talk about compensation and classification is the huge amount of money that we are investing in training employees to bring them from no skills, low skills, up to high skilled workers, with the idea that if we can't find them out there, we need to create our own pipeline. And so we have been using the apprenticeship program process as a way of training people and bringing them on board. So what does this mean? One of the things that I've heard a lot of is, okay, does this comp and class study mean you're going to throw a lot of money and come back to me and say, everybody in the city ought to get a big raise? I wish I could say that. What I'm trying to explain to you is that is not going to solve this problem. This is a multifaceted problem, and it's going to require a multifaceted approach to coming up with solutions. One of the things that we look at is, we've indicated that people are leaving here because of the cost of living. We're trying to look and say, how can we develop cost of living strategies to make this an affordable place for people to live? We're trying to make this a place where if you already live here, we make this a desirable place to work, so we're an employer of choice, so you want to remain here. We're looking at recruitment strategies. We've got grant money that we're using for going out and recruiting people to come in so we can invest in them, to train them for their positions. Retention strategies, what kinds of things can we do to convince people to stay and continue to work for us rather than leave us when they might be eligible for retirement? As I indicated, we talked about the training investment in employees. We are trying to create our own pipeline. We are trying to say, if you live in Lake Havasu City and you want to work for us, we will find a way to make sure you have the skills you need to be employable by us. Knowledge transfer, one of the things that's going to be a real struggle is, as we have that large number of people going out the door due to retirements, we have to have a way to transfer the knowledge they have to some of our younger, newer employees who don't have those skills and knowledge. And that may require at some point that we look at double filling positions. I don't, I can't tell you how many or what, but that is something that we have to make sure we have that transfer. And then creative job design. We are looking at ways to say, okay, are there ways people can share jobs? Are there ways we can combine jobs to give people the opportunity to learn new skills and to not only do what they're doing now, but to take on other challenges with their career? Having said all of that, I, I want you to understand that this is not a simple problem, and throwing money at it is not the simple solution. It may be part of the solution, and at some point in time, you may need to consider that as part of the, the answer, but it is not the only thing, and throwing money at it is not going to fix this. So what we've done is we've asked our consultant to take a look at our market comparator cities and to come up with a methodology of who are we going to compare ourselves to? And part of my reason for telling you all of this is, what you're being asked to do today is to approve those recommendations for the market, market comparator cities, but in order to do that, I want you to understand the methodology about how we looked at the data, how we came up with the recommendations that we've come up with, and how we will use that data going forward in terms of determining if there are good job matches with those cities. And with that, I can either answer your questions now, or I can have Matt come up and talk about the second part of the study.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Kimmelton. Are there questions, members of the council, for Dr. Kimmelton at this point?
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a quick question? Did you say that fire and police are excluded from this study?
No, I did not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just said, we separated out fire and police because they have a different retirement qualification.
Okay, I thought I, I thought I heard, I thought, what are we doing? Okay, thank you.
Absolutely not. And one of the things that we will talk about is that this concept that I came here to, that one size fits all, is not necessarily applicable. So what we are doing is looking and saying, what are the most appropriate market cities for what we're trying to do in general? And then what do we need to look at to make sure that we are addressing the critical needs like we have in our police department right now, or retention in our fire department?
Mayor.
Councilmember Campbell?
How many people, on average, did you hire last year? We've heard how many we've lost. How many people did we actually hire?
Double what we've lost. So somewhere around 50 people.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we bring the consultant up?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to be back with you. Just briefly, Dr. Kimmelton was on a roll here, so I'm really hard act to follow. I have a much briefer presentation, but I come to you this evening just kind of with a quick overview of our methodology. Before I get started on that, I do want to mention as well, we're down the path here on the study. We've engaged the employees in completing job questionnaires. Three of our staff were onsite a couple of weeks ago, interacting with some incumbents from those positions, so we were able to do some onsite interviews and some site visits. That gives us kind of an insight into job design. We can start talking from here about job descriptions, job titles, really affirming the true number type and level of distinct occupations that you have. I won't say that we're at a crossroads this evening, but kind of phase two of this is that salary survey and benefit survey work. So we wanted to make sure that we checked in on our methodology. You don't quite fit into a cute little mold for, I guess I would say, probably the 50 or 60 of these that we do annually. Most of those are in large, major metro areas, where I have 12 cities that love to elbow each other out of the way to be number one for police or in the top three for fire. You're it, as far as where we're standing, right? There's certainly some regional agencies that either the city is losing staff to, but I'm, you know, kind of remiss to say that we have just a core list of competitors that make wild sense, right? If I distinguish how we define the market, it's generally comparators, which are agencies that have jobs like ours, they may have some other attributes that you all hold near and dear, demographics, population, general fund, those types of things. That allows us, I wouldn't say that we can't compare jobs, but that also kind of requires us to compare cities a little bit, and that is also very challenging. You have, you know, high daytime population, high weekend population, high seasonal population, you've got a lot of moving parts when we go to define either competitors or comparators. To say that there are, you know, an abundance of local competitors, I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily the case. But Dr. Kimmelton mentioned some of the challenges, I think, when we go to define what is our market. Housing availability, you know, access to a local labor pool, how isolated you are geographically. I love to study kind of where people live versus where they work. Are they driving from 30 minutes away, 45 minutes away, an hour away? What is kind of reasonable as far as a commuting distance when some positions are required to be on call or maybe called back to work, that kind of thing? Historically, the agencies that you selected to compare to was not an unsound methodology. It was simply, give me five cities that are bigger than us and five cities that are smaller than us across the state. Our methodology is not going to depart wildly from that, but I want to kind of reassure you before we talk about the specific cities, that we're not going to box you into a corner with any of the numbers that we come back with. You are going to retain, you know, a policy decision that hopefully runs right alongside the budget. And if it's not a policy statement, it's at least a strategical or philosophical statement that says, hey, we need to be at X in the market in order to recruit and in order to retain. I look at class and comp as kind of, this is a really geeky analogy, but effectively, it's preventative maintenance on the car. We don't think about it too much unless we have, right, fill in the blank, the check engine light comes on, or we get a flat tire, or whatever. I want to see that not happen with class and comp. I don't want that to be on that list of items that prevent us from retention and from recruitment. What we looked at when we looked kind of statewide for a moment was things like population, things like full-time equivalencies, things like general fund on the expenditure side, the budgeted side, the revenue side. I want a finding chance at finding as many of your jobs as possible when we do the salary survey work. So I need to have full-service cities that have police, that have fire, that have utilities. I will say, not very many have an airport. You do not have a library, so we took that out, you know, of kind of some of, you know, the data. Proximity, I wouldn't say necessarily matters, but I do think that we are going to have to apply some measure of a cost of living differential to the data that we collect. When we do the salary survey, we collect salary plans, budget documents, job descriptions, we're going to build a custom salary survey database, so job by job, I can tell you where you stand for each classification out in the market. Now, the market is kind of a reference point, but it is not the only leg that we're going to be standing on. Obviously affordability, sustainability, internal equity, and then the other, you know, items that human resources initiatives have been working on with respect to recruitment, retention, getting a little bit creative. I want this to just kind of be holistic. But what I do want to bring to you is data, so that you can make informed decisions about knowing where you stand, in this case, kind of on a statewide look, and being really knowing where you stand, in this case, kind of on a statewide look and being really intentional about making statements about where we want to be or where we choose to be. So the list before you is slightly modified from your last list from five, six years ago. We had some additional West Valley cities, I think, on the original list and you did not have Queen Creek on the list. Some of those West Valley cities have really just outpopulated us. Now, instead of a five up, five down, I kind of have about a six up, two down going on this initial list, recognizing that your daytime population, your weekend population and your seasonal population, you are boxing a little bit above your weight class when it comes to call volume, demand on services, demand on infrastructure. So I do have some more larger cities than I do have smaller cities. I would also be prepared to entertain looking at some additional agencies targeting police and fire or targeting utilities, you know, like a local utility district, if there is one, looking at Mojave County and what they offer, making sure that we're competitive, you know, at the starting value for a police officer, you know, for example. I'm not making those statements for you, but I want to make sure that if we have some regional or immediate neighbors that we know, you know, that we want to try and stay ahead of them. There are some other cities in your county that we did not include because they are quite small. Their FTE count, their general fund is quite a bit smaller. Some of them are pretty competitive, so I'm not opposed to them, but I don't want them to be kind of an obvious omission, you know, from this list. But as I mentioned, we'll want to talk about what that wage differential and cost of living differential does, you know, get to us. I really only have one more slide and it's really a slide for future conversation. And that is really what factors influence our city's ability and intent to peg a pay philosophy at average, a little bit more conservative than average, a little bit more aggressive than average. The answer to these, and these are not maybe the only factors, because Dr. Kimmelton did a far better job of explaining that than I might on this slide. But there are some factors in play here that, you know, drive us in a certain direction to at least, you know, try to get to market average, right? So can we define the market and then can we define where we want to be in the market? That would be my goal. So that'll be probably as part of the budget conversation as we start to get data. But really, we stand before you this evening just looking for an affirmation of the agencies that you wished us to go survey. I will also say at my own peril that we'd love to over survey. So if you want more data, I'll let you react to that data, but I get to control how you react to it. It's not going to be about dollars and cents. It will be about who has our jobs. So if I look at this list or I add or remove cities from the list and I come to you and say, hey, we're trying to survey 150 jobs, some of the cities on this list are going to have 140 of those 150 jobs. That's a great comparator. Now, we can talk about what they pay secondarily, but if I also have agencies on this list that only have 30 of our 150 jobs or 50 of our 150 jobs, I might say, well, we tried, but we don't necessarily need to survey them again. So to Dr. Kimmelton's opener, you know, comment here, it's not an intent to get everybody a salary adjustment. I want this thing to be bigger than kind of that FY '25, '26 budget planning. I want to have a methodology in place that you all are comfortable with that kind of lasts, you know, to say, what is our market? What is our desired position in that market? Because it kind of gives staff the answers to the test before we even take the test, right? To say, we know our market, we can go update the data. How do we get to where we want to be if we're not there? How do we stay there once we get there? Okay? And that can also take multiple years. I'll pause there. That is it as far as the PowerPoint slides, but I will, Mr. Mayor, entertain any questions from, yeah, from the council is for both of us, certainly.
Yeah, thank you. Are there questions, members of the council, for Dr. Kimmelton or Matt? Vice Mary Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, I know we've discussed this in the past about our neighboring cities, but I really would like to see Kingman and Bullhead included in this. We are losing people that do travel to Kingman and Bullhead and it may not be city employees, but we have people that are working in the hospitals, people that are working in the schools. I even have DoorDashers that are driving up to Bullhead. So I would really like to see those cities included in this. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Diaz?
Yeah, so I want to banana peel back a little bit, your statement here that all comparators have lower cost of living than Lake Havasu's. And I know, give me the pieces of the pie when you're looking at cost of living. I mean, there's insurance, there's medical, housing, transportation,
Yep.
Fuel, I mean, what is?
There's composite index, there's groceries, there's fuel, there's, you know, lots and lots there. We looked at a couple of different sources. Council for Community and Economic Research, we looked at MIT, we look at Spurlings, you know, just kind of for fun, because that gives us a bunch of other, you know, tapable points. We look at the area.
Matt, if I could, you are do this every day. What are all those things? What's Spurling? What's MIT? What is?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just some various sources that study, you know, cost of living and cost of wages, you know, across different areas, because as a numbers guy, I fear fuzzy math, right? My, I loathe changing the numbers so that when I show you, oh, look for police officer, but then I've got a bunch of footnotes that say, by the way, I adjusted this by plus seven and this one by minus two and that kind of thing. But the data bears out that, you know, with the exception of Flagstaff and some others that aren't on this list, like a Sedona, you know, the cost of living composite index, when I look at the valley, I think housing wins. I look at the median home price in the valley and the median home price here. That's probably the biggest delta if I look at kind of a ledger.
I was getting that.
Yeah.
Housing is probably the number.
It is.
Right.
Yeah, it is. And I think right behind that are some of the factors that Dr. Kimmelton mentioned as far as how do I get you here? And more importantly, how do I get your family here so you don't want to go back? You know, like how do we, you know, how do we create those opportunities that everybody can succeed as a family, you know, by coming to work for us kind of things?
One more question to Dr. Reddick. You had mentioned there's programs where you're offering to our employees to get better so they're more valuable and they get paid more. Are you getting a lot of traction on that?
We actually are. In fact, we're thrilled to be working with Arizona Works, with the State Apprenticeship Office, to be developing. And we're in the initial stages of this, so I can't tell you for sure it's successful. But as you saw from our last council meeting, we have kids who are in high school who go through our cadet program and think they want to be, are interested in a career in law enforcement. They turn 18, they graduate from high school, and where do they go? They go in the military or they leave here to go to college somewhere and then they don't come back. What we did with the Police Service Assistant Apprenticeship was create an opportunity to say, okay, if you want to be a police officer, we have gainful employment for you. You can attend one of the local universities here and obtain a degree, like the person that you just approved, their contract tonight is actually a psychology major and she's going through to get her degree in psychology, which is a great career field for a potential police officer. And then when they turn 21, we can feed them, use that as a feeder system right into the process. In the fire department as another example, we're taking our CTE students. The goal is to have them graduate from high school with their EMTB certification. They in turn could enter the city employment as a apprentice and we can then train them through to become a firefighter/paramedic, which is our hiring standard. But to be a firefighter/paramedic takes four years. So we have to have a way to keep kids engaged, or adults for that matter, engaged in the career field to get them where we need them to be. And that requires the investment that we're making through the apprenticeship program. Our wastewater utility and our fleet maintenance, we're looking at apprenticeship programs in those fields to bring in people with no skills, to get them the certifications they need to be licensed, utility workers and plant operators. So I have used apprenticeship programs in other places where I've worked and been very successful, so I have a great deal of confidence that this is going to work here.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, one more. I noticed that some of our staff and are currently living in Kingman or in other cities or towns. I hear that that's expanding a little bit more because the housing, overall housing cost is less. With that being said, I didn't think the overall rents were less that I have seen because we have a company there as well. I love the question that Michelle has brought up, that I would just like that data. Like, how are they retaining their employees? Is it specifically they have more to offer? I do work with Arizona at work as well and we're expanding on many other options, including heavy equipment operating company that will be coming, that will definitely be bringing people. But on another level, through the rural transportation portion of what I love to do, there's been a lot of conversations on how we can start transporting people via busing. We had a outdated study that went to the tri-city council. It was like three or four years old. And as I speak to many of the employees in this community, along with the employees that I have in the community, they've also moved to Kingman and are talking about, that is a very easy commute for me. It's 45 minutes. My husband commutes into Hackberry almost every other day, you know, into Kingman as well, and he doesn't think much of it. But when bigger cities that I've recognized and been tracking their transit, there has been municipalities and cities and larger companies that are literally hiring their own busing system, allowing that employee to get on a bus and actually start working on their laptops without having to worry about traffic, gasoline, fuel, to get our pricing down. Because I do think, I had heard, and maybe somebody here can tell me if this is true, that even electrical, electric and utility costs in Kingman and Bullhead, Fort Mojave, are substantially less than what we have here. I mean, we have people saying that, do I pay my mortgage or do I pay my electric bill? So I think the ones that really love working for the city and love Lake Havasu City do not find that commute to be difficult.
And I'm not going to argue your point. I think that's a valid point. And we are looking at things like transportation vouchers. Does it make sense to tell an employee that if you live in, you know, more than 50 miles away, that we will provide you with some transportation allowance to get back forth to work? Your idea about busing people is probably a good thing. I think the important thing to think about when you're looking at particularly Bullhead or Kingman or Parker for that matter, one of the challenges that we have is that when you did the last study, we were the leader and we were setting the wages by which people then competed, you know, do you want to come here to work? Well, what has happened is as we do things, as even these apprenticeship programs, as we establish these different incentives to get people, what is happening is we set a standard, they exceed the standard. We set the standard, they exceed the standard. And what we're doing is we're pricing each other out of the, of the market to the extent that we are creating our, we're half-creating our own problem in terms of how do we compete for this limited workforce? My answer to that is, yes, we have to find ways, once we get people here, to make them want to stay here and we're working on those things. But I think the other thing in terms of our recruitment opportunities is we can't rely on the limited labor pool that we have in this rural area. We need to create our own pipeline of employees and that's the efforts that we're doing, particularly through the apprenticeship program, is we're saying, okay, we're not, we're not in the who's going to steal who employees game. We're going to try and create a labor market that live and work in Havasu because we invested in them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Knutson?
At Dr. Kimmelton and Matt's comments as well, too. So, you know, certainly if council wants to take a look at the data, and we can certainly do that, but, you know, with Bullhead City, Kingman, great people, great communities, great employees, but as Dr. Kimmelton stated, when we have a list that's on the screen here that doesn't include Bullhead and Kingman, is that we're able to set that standard. And in terms of that threshold and our ability to possibly attract employees from their areas into Havasu. Now, if that's our goal, then that's what, that's the, that's the approach with here. If we include Bullhead and Kingman, then that standard is reduced and that gap is much, much smaller in terms of our ability to set that, set that standard. So if we include their data, then that standard goes down from that regard. So just kind of put that in perspective. So that's kind of why some of the thought or the conversations here exist with not including Bullhead, not including Kingman, is we want their employees.
Could we, yeah, Councilmember McCann and Moses?
I mean, could we possibly just see their data, not maybe include it in what we're going to take all of our, you know, our formula, but at least just see the, see the comparables? I think that might put your mind at ease and, but also not mess with our expert who is telling us this is what we need to make our decisions off of.
That's a good point. When it comes to Bullhead specifically, they have, they're just so different. They don't, they have a fire district, they don't have certain areas, they run a senior center, we don't. There's just lots of different things in those areas. But to at least see it from a council perspective, some executive summary that might, you know, allow some comfort for the members of the council.
And Mayor, I agree. The executive summary, I think, is good, too, to possibly retain people. We can use that as a comparison city. Hey, you only live in Kingman, this is how much we pay more. Not that we're trying to steal your employees by all means, but.
100% we are.
Well, again, you know, at the end of the day, I want to be a good steward of taxpayers' money, too, and understand that we're getting the best quality and people are here and not leaving because maybe they just don't like the organization. I mean, we've all been there before. People would leave because they're just unhappy with their boss or they're unhappy with other things and we can throw all the money, like you said, in the world at them and they're just not going to stay or they refuse to do that commute. So I like the comparable cities, executive summaries, that you can sit back and either encourage people to come to Lake Havasu City. Is it worthy of that drive? And on the rural transportation advocacy council portion of it, how many, I'd love to know how many people would be willing to commute if they really didn't have to drive their car with their fuel, with their tires, and is it worth, worth the drive? Because every big municipality we know, I grew up in it, my dad drove two and a half hours to work and back and Councilmember Diaz probably understands you, too. And you chose to go rural and you knew you were going to make less, but in the long run, your livelihood was better and maybe your overall cost. Because the cost of vehicles is what I'm seeing. You know, you got these e-bikes now, people are using those instead of buying a car because of the cost of living. So I appreciate all your work. I appreciate the study. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Campbell. That data is available on the WACOG Transportation Regional Study that we went through. It has all of the, the transportation and movement between the three big cities, so Bullhead, Kingman and Havasu.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I just want to assure all the people at home that are worried, Kingman and Bullhead's not comparable to us at all. I've been there, trust me. Havasu's, Havasu's really nice. And then we can use that, be like, well, look, they're not even on the list. I hope Kingman and Bullhead is watching.
Yeah.
And let's leave that out of the newspaper, all the really good things we're doing. We don't want them poaching them from us, so. Kingman and Bullhead. I just want to say, I think you guys did a great work on this and, you know, I like letting the numbers speak for themselves and I like the updated list and thank you for all your hard work.
Any additional questions before we open the public hearing? All right. Thank you, Matt and Dr. Kimmelton. Stay close because we may have some additional questions after we hear from our citizens. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? If so, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Joan De Zero, council. I did this work for 40 years and the doctor did a fabulous job on her presentation. The only thing, I have run into this in the past, was that I understand she's having trouble with the turnover the first three months and the first six months. And one of the things I did when I had that problem before was you pay the people that are giving, when they have recruitment bonus, bonuses for hiring or referring people, you could pay half of it when they first come in, half after six months, if you're having that trouble, because that also encourages the person that brought them in, keep them engaged, keep them in, working with them, helping them get acquainted, and then maybe a bonus for the person coming in, especially if it's a hard to fill job at the end of a year. Because after a year, people have made friends, they've gotten the system down, they've understood what's going on. If you're getting a lot of turnover that first three to six months, those are a couple of ideas that might help in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's Bonnie Toy. Just, I totally misunderstood what this item was and I thought it was something that. what this item was. And I thought it was something that it was ending up costing the city. Is, what you're doing is just a selection of comparing organizations and cities to Lake Havasu? You do realize that Lake Havasu City is uncomparable, or is it incomparable? Whatever it is, we, there's a term for our city that is not, I don't hear it, is I heard it one time on a news report in the early 2000s. We are ex, E-X, burbs, B-U-R-B. And what that is, is the people who moved to the suburbs to get out of the metropolis wanted to get away from the suburbs and moved out to where we live, the exburbs. We are absolutely exburbs. And those cities that are listed as comparison cities, I think only Prescott might be one of those that you might be the closest to as far as an exurb. All those cities are on interstates, are near larger towns than we are. We are nowhere near any metropolis. The nearest metropolis to us is Las Vegas, a whole nother state away, not even Phoenix. We're closer to Nevada than we are Vegas. Maybe you even need to include comparing our cities to ones in our city, to like Boulder City, because that would be, might be a little more accurate. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Corky Corner, President of the Havasu Professional Firefighters Association. There's no way I can hit all the stuff that we got to talk about in five minutes. So tonight, obviously, we're just talking about this city. So I just want to say that I stand in support of, of what, of what we're doing here, and using the data to try and go out and look at all this stuff, right? Let's come with the facts and not the feelings necessarily. All we're doing tonight really is talking about the cities. A lot of the cities are repeats, we got a little bit new. My comment on those is, I understand where they're coming from. As long as we all understand that, we still have towns in there that aren't cities and don't carry the same stuff. So Bobby brought it up, you know, when we started looking at public safety, we, we have a whole separate side thing, right? Like, we can't compare to Oro Valley, we can't compare to Marana, they don't even have fire departments. Same thing with Bullhead. And I agree, the last thing I want to do is compare to Bullhead or Kingman. We should be pulling all their best employees, and they should be coming to Lake Havasu. That being said, we do have to look at different, we have to look at where we're losing people to. I know we hate it. The reality is, we're becoming a little, a little piece of California here in Lake Havasu with their, our pricing and everything else. And I know we're not going to get there, and I'm not asking for that either. But that's where we lose our people to. We're losing it to Nevada, we're losing our guys to Henderson, to Vegas. And we have more employees commuting from Havasu to Henderson, Vegas, than we have people commuting here to work, at least in the public sector. So those are just a few of the things there. The cities are closed, they have their data behind it. I support that, I support that data there. We just have to understand that when we get into the nitty gritty, and we're going, and we're actually making decisions, some of those aren't going to be real for the fire department and/or public safety PD, too, right? So you got to look at where our comparators, comparators are, right? Of where we're actually losing people to. And we do, we need to bring the best here to Lake Havasu. We have 40 leaving in the next five years of a fire department of 100, and that's including administration. I mean, we're losing them faster than we can bring them in. Our problem is that bottom, that bottom in, and we're spending significant amount of money to train these guys. It's a loose number, and it's an old number, so it could be more. But a five-year fireman is said to be, is about, even invested a million dollars into a five-year, five years of a guy. So anything less than that, we start taking a little bit off. But when we train, we're, you know, we don't want to be that training ground that we bring them in, we pay for all that training, right? We're putting them through paramedic school, we're hiring these guys, we're CTE kids, right? We're hiring these kids, we're going to do all this training for them, we're going to invest a million dollars, and then we're just going to hand them off, right? You're not going to buy a million dollar car and just give it away after a couple of years, right? You're going to try and get something out of it. So we want to keep the guys here. We're putting a lot of money in our guys, especially in public, in public safety. We just got to figure out how, like I said, there's, there's so much to go with that, that's to fix the problem. But, you know, these are the factors in the city, I think, are where we're going to start to look at who's going to be, how do we start making guys want to stay here? And how are we going to get the people from the valley to come here? Because we're not going to find 40 highly qualified individuals to replace out of our little rural town. It's just not a reality. That's why we are where we are, and that's why we're seeing what we're seeing.
Thank you.
Mayor question?
Yeah. Why haven't, why, maybe it's to Dr. Kimble, why have, why isn't Henderson, you're so correct, every firefighter that I know, they're even commuting back and forth to Vegas. I hear that more than I hear about these comparable, comparable cities that we have here. And I know we're not just looking at fire department, we're looking at all the staff. But that makes a lot of sense to me. That's only a couple hours away.
We actually have that data and are looking at it. One of the things these comparator cities are, we looked at the city overall. What we're trying to do is match jobs, and where can we find cities that we can match the most jobs on? There are some specific jobs that are not going to be good matches. And for instance, he gave you examples of cities that don't, that are on that list, that don't even have fire departments. So in those instances, we'll go out and we'll say, okay, we know these are places that we have people that live here, that commute there for, for various reasons, pay being one of them. But I will also tell you this, that one of the issues that we have is, when you are comparing compensation with various cities or various jobs, you have to look at total compensation. So you have to look at, how does the pension work? What benefits are being offered? Sometimes, and I'm not saying in this instance that's true, but we see a lot of, when an employee is, it's a buyer's market, and employees are saying, where do I want to go? They tend to look at what's in my paycheck, not, what's the long-term benefit of working for Lake Havasu City? What's the long-term pension requirements from being in our, our public safety retirement system versus Nevada system? That's one of the reasons that we don't typically use California cities. California's entire system is so different than how we pay people and how we provide benefits to people, that even if we said, that's where we're losing labor to, you can't compare the jobs. So we have the data for specifics. I'll give you an example, Mojave County Sheriff's is one of the places that we lose police officers to. We have the data, and when we get to looking at police officers, we'll look at that market comparison for that specific job to get a good job match.
Thank you. That was a great answer.
Thank you so much for, for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional discussion or emotion. So again, what we're here this evening to do is really just to adopt the recommendation that was presented to us for the comparator cities. As they continue to do the work, council will be engaged through, through budget process or any policy changes that might need to occur to implement those recommendations. Mayor, Councilmember Dolan, motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, sorry. I know this might not even pertain to this, but we just did one of these studies a couple of years ago, and we had a lot of challenges, and I'll leave it at that. Can you tell me what we're doing different in this study?
Councilmember Lynn, I wasn't here when we did the last study, so I don't, I don't want to speak disparagingly about anything that occurred. I will tell you what, what we are doing, that is, and quite frankly, this is my background in my career field. We are using data to make our decisions. This is not, how do I feel about, I wish I could pay every employee in this city more money. I think they're valuable, I think they deserve it. We literally had 100% participation in either submitting a position questionnaire to the consultant or a revised job description. Every job in this city has been covered during that process. The consultants came and did, out of our 150 positions, they did 130 job audits. So they talked to employees about, what do you do on a daily basis? I am extremely confident that this study, how it's going to be different, is when I give you information and we ask for your policy decisions and your approval, it will be based on fact.
All right, Mr. Dolan, are you still interested in making a motion?
No, I changed my mind. I was thinking about Kingman and Bullhead. All right, I move to adopt the resolution of public sector personal consultants to utilize the identified market comparator cities.
Do you need to add the executive summary part of things, or are we okay? Just that?
I think we're comparing, we're not adding them to the comparative, but yeah, the executive summary. So we're, the motion is just the comparable cities.
Okay, second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.8 is professional services agreement for the citywide Wash Management Plan Project with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Mr. Wolf?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm, I've got, the agenda item is the Wash Management Plan Professional Services Agreement to prepare our Wash Management Plan going forward. As part of that presentation here, I'd like to also just reiterate our current Wash program and where we're at with that. The current program, and some of you may have recognized these slides, I came in September and gave you an update on where we were just prior to awarding a couple of Wash projects that we had. In 2015, we implemented the, an engineering analysis for the Wash stabilization program. And in that 2015 program identified top 10 most critical wash conditions throughout the city, and the CIP also identified two additional. We took that list, basically, it's this summary of recommended improvements in 2015. And as you can see, all but two have been crossed off, meaning we've had some successful program implementation. I might add that this has been successful since 20, since 2002, we've got Wash projects every year since 2002. Just to show you what we've kind of been doing here, give you an idea of the Wash crossings that we've done or Wash improvements. This is a recent picture of the Eldorado Wash Crossing improvements, where we were able to actually improve the whole crossing, get the box culvert under the roadway, and improve the roadway itself. Another project we recently completed last year was the Daytona Wash. You can see on the picture on the left, the channel that was constructed, the steep slopes on the side were of critical nature. And so that, that identified that as a top priority project. The picture on the right is also a confluence with a large Wash that actually drained into the Daytona. And we wanted to make sure that confluence was well adapted. Another project that you, a little bit earlier in our program, that some may recognize is the Pima Plaza Wash Crossing. This is one I actually have that is, got water in it. Not that we don't need them, but it was interesting. And then some other miscellaneous improvements, where we have washes that cross several of our roads throughout the city. In fact, the alluvial is, is basically, the washes are all going downstream from east to west. And our roadway network that travels anywhere north and south has to cross those washes at safe crossings. But tonight, I'm here for the Wash Management Plan. We've got to go and look towards the future now, and what are we going to do next, now that we've had this successful implementation? There's kind of a scope to assess the existing conditions that we've got out there, prioritize the future projects, develop the hydraulics and recommended alternatives and costs. It will include, fortunately, the city did undertake what we call our Flow 2D modeling. This is a lot of the expensive part of any Wash prioritization, is we already know the volume, the velocity, and erosion characteristics in the washes. And with that, we can now determine an updated priority list of 10 to 12 critical Wash reaches. That, that plan will include a public outreach and public notice, so that it can be accepted. And it will also outline likely environmental permitting, which includes owl relocations or environmentally sensitive areas in the waters of the US, is what that abbreviation there is for. I might add that we have successfully had the, a conservancy in town to remove two breeding pair of owls that we had in the Wash prior to construction as an environmental mitigation. Those owls are right now in captivity and being reprogrammed, they call it. We've asked the conservancy, because of the importance of our owls, they may, after the construction of the Havasu Bay Wash Six, where we removed them, we've got the conservancy actually wanting to bring them back and bring them back to our Wash. So we're working on that, on that side of things for wildlife in our city. And then the, the plan will also outline funding opportunities for either grants, and also utilization of our annual flood control allocation through Mojave County. The fiscal impact of this study, we have funds in the amount of $147,615 from our current year flood control fund for the study. And with suggested motion, I'm going to suggest we approve the professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for a citywide Wash Management Plan Project in the amount of $147,615. With that, I'll open it up for any questions that public or council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Yeah, so this methodology has been really fantastic. I've said this many times before, over the years, if, you know, if you lived to your 80s, 90s, you would really have to think your way home if there was a weather event or a storm event in order to get home without going through some Wash crossing or having some issues. Almost all of those are non-existent, with the exception of the two that we're still working on now. And then there's some other areas for stabilization and Wash management. By putting together a long-term or a long-range plan, which this study will do, really is a fantastic way to ensure that our flood control dollars are utilized in the most appropriate way going forward. So thank you for bringing that, that forward, to be able to do this and move forward on, on this type of a project. So are there any questions from members of council? Councilmember Campbell?
First, I want to say outstanding work. You guys have done great work. Everybody, the contractors, everybody's working hard. And you're absolutely right, Mayor, that I remember the days that family used to get out, anybody that owned a loader in town had to jump on the loader no matter what time of night it was. And you were meant to clean the streets out just to get people to work. My only, and maybe this is the wrong place, but I'm going to do it anyways. The highway crossing under Highway 95, which is south of Smoke Tree, there's a culvert there. There's got to be some way we can improve that so we can make that pedestrian traffic underneath the highway to make it safer to get down to Rotary Park. I know, I got a smile out of you. I had to do it. I'm always just going to throw the dart, but just a suggestion.
Well, thank you for that suggestion. Yeah. Are there any other comments or questions from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone else, would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Yeah, Councilmember Diaz?
Make a motion if there's no other discussion.
Yeah, please.
I move to approve the professional services agreement for the citywide Wash Management Plan Project with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., in the amount of $147,615.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Diaz, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mayor, I'll be recusing.
This is the next item?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then our final public hearing of the evening is item 8.9. It's the Lake Havasu Avenue and Mesquite Avenue paving rehabilitation project of Pioneer Earthmovers, Inc. Mr. Hart, I assume you might be introducing Mr.?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. As Mr. Cummings' immediate supervisor, I wanted to come up and take a quick moment to introduce him to you as this is his first appearance before you. Brent is his first name. Brent is a project manager in our capital programs team in our Public Works Administration Division. He's our newest hire. He's been here approximately seven months now, and he hit the ground running. We've been very pleased with Brent and his ability to pick up what we do here and his broad background. Brent spent his first 16 years of his career in the private industry, working in the utilities in which he ran his own company the last eight of those years. Then he moved into the public sector, working for the government. He worked for 14 years total. And those combined with the cities of Lakewood and Federal Way and Washington State. So he did come down from Washington State. He came from the west side there. And he was a city inspector for them as well as dabbled in as a PM as well. And we are very thankful to have him on board. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brent.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, and welcome, Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate that. And good evening, Mayor and council members. So tonight I have for you a project. And the project's name is Lake Havasu Avenue and Mesquite Avenue Rehabilitation. The criterias are as follows. The diameter of the pipe, we're actually moving and upsizing from six inch to eight inch. The material is also, well, it's AC pipe right now, asbestos. And that'll be C900. The PSI is kind of high in this in this area. So I think that upsizing the pipe and really focusing on this stretch of road is very important. There are there have been some break histories in the past. I don't know how many off the top of my head. And the age of the pipe was in the early 1970s. So it's been in the ground a while. So the purpose is continuation of the city's efforts to replace water mains based upon age, material, size, and history of the breaks, ensuring the fire hydrants are up to the city of Lake Havasu's fire code and improving the overall circulation and quality. Schedule for this project is 180 days or six months. And the completion is June this fiscal year. Construction budget is out of two funds. IRF is $3,500,000. Water funds is $1.3 million. And the lowest bid was $2,913,037 from Pioneer Earthmovers. This is with the base bid and the fourth account was $3,413,969. This stretch that work that that this project is within will be about 2,777 linear feet of six inch and eight inch water main, water services, fire lines, and new fire hydrants. Here on the slide, you'll see just kind of on the right side, you'll see the scope of work. And it's from the west side of Riviera Boulevard up to the Pima Wash. Or sorry, the east side of Riviera to the west side of Pima Wash on Mesquite Avenue. And then the other picture just kind of shows the C900 pipe that we're using in lieu of AC asbestos pipe. And with that, are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Cummings on this item? Councilmember Diaz?
Is there any extra reinforcement that goes on when you're connecting new pipe to old pipe? Just to make sure there's restraint joints for that. I'm sorry, I can, I'm sorry. We use restraint joints and couplers for those. Thank you. Yes.
Councilmember Koch?
Not a question, just a comment. And there's been a lot of construction on the Riviera area, Mesquite. There has been some trials and tribulations during the first couple of days of that for the hospital for traffic and some of the confusion, some of the signs directing our patients on how and I know this is going to impact flow into the hospital as well as the ambulance. So just making sure that we're cognizant of going out and making sure that the signage is really easy to follow. And so we're not sending our patients on a big little hunt around the neighborhoods to get to the hospitals. I appreciate that if we could keep that in mind when the process starts.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Air motion?
Councilmember Moses?
I move to award the base bid for the Lake Havasu Avenue and Mesquite Avenue paving rehabilitation project to Pioneer Earthmovers, Inc. in the amount of $2,913,037.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Vice Mayor Lynn. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. We might have to go again. Okay, well, we'll do a vote one more time.
Motion carries with six council members voting yes and one council member recusing.
Thank you. Good job, Mr. Cummings, and welcome to the team.
Welcome.
All right, item nine is called to the public. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. There will be a light indicator on the box, excuse me, on the screens, a box on the screens that will give you a countdown. There's three minutes available. Just keep an eye on the screens. We do ask that you address the council directly when you come up to the podium. Again, this is just an opportunity for you to address the council. We can't have a two-way conversation at this time. With that being said, no one signed up and you don't have to sign up. So if you'd like to talk during Call to the Public, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the record, and share your comments.
Hi, Council and Mayor Nancy Dickey. I just wanted to update you on the progress with ACC and the fight against unicorns. Just had a really nice conversation. He worked for utilities and he says it's outrageous, our bills. That's why our utilities are so high and people want to leave. We are on the docket with ACC. Haven't heard when we have an attorney. We started crowdfunding on Give, Send, Go. Cal, I do believe you have the link. And I sent you that whole investigation on where the money is coming from. It's in your email. Okay, so we're just waiting to hear. In the meantime, I just laid out a huge chunk of change for retain for an attorney and an expert. Let's try to get these bills down. So many seniors are selling because they can't afford to live here. They bought those houses 30 years ago. It's unbelievable. But we cannot turn into another California. We have to tone it down somehow. And I love Dr. She's great. Her rate making is perfect for our city. So I'm glad you voted that in. I'm done. Any questions?
No, we can't have a two-way conversation. But I will say thank you for all your hard work.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for being here. Yes.
I thought maybe city council had a question.
Yeah. Yeah, please, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Manager, City Attorney, Ms. Kelly. It's Bonnie Toy. I love you guys. I just want to say, one, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Since this is the last council meeting of the year, do like to say that really wish you had put up some decorations. But that's not my, you know, whatever. I've been gone the last few times. But I just wanted to tell you, one, I really appreciate you guys. People are amazing. You really are. You guys serve our city and you help it in every way that you can. Some of the ideas I think I might disagree with. Some of you I might think you're opinionated differently than I am, which is all good because opinions are important. And being kind to each other is important. And Mayor, I want to say that I really appreciate that you always end every city council meeting with, see you next time, be kind. I appreciate that a lot. And Ms. Campbell, after what you just said to, what's his name? The second to the last item about the pedestrian walkway underneath Interstate 95 or Interstate. Let that never be an interstate. Under the 95. It made me think for just one moment, wow, how many other places in the city would that be safe or pedestrians and people? Not just at Smoke Tree going down Rotary, but all along the highway. It would be a lot safer. And since our city is going to be around for gazillions of years with all the people, that something to plan in the future? Which also reminds me, I keep forgetting to bring up, Mayor, the directional signs to the courthouse. You have no directional signs that say, hey, courthouse over there. You have a new courthouse. Those beautiful blue signs, you need one for the courthouse. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Well, I'm Dennis Dickey, and I'm the quartermaster for the DFW Post 9401. I would like to thank you for your participation in helping us to kick off this year's memorial tribute to all veterans on that. I want to thank you again for your cooperation and your presence there. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council during Call to the Public? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Item 10, our current events, are there any council committee reports? Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, just reminding everybody that I believe, I'm checking my calendar, it's tomorrow that we have the elected officials meeting through the Chamber of Commerce. All the elected officials currently, the timing is, you may ask, why in December? But because a lot of the elected officials are heading into session here in January. So tomorrow night, am I correct here confirming? Yes, tomorrow night, the chambers of elected officials, and it will be at the nautical in Beachfront Resort at 5:30. So if you want to hear from all the newly elected for the county and some of the state, we'll all be there. And come on down. Campbell's is sponsoring some food. So come down, eat, and get to know all your elected officials. Thank you much.
All right, I have a couple of updates. The first one will be the Mojave County Water Authority. Many members of the authority attended CRUA, the Colorado River Users Water Association, last week in Las Vegas. And we also had a meeting today. The Bureau of Reclamation, this is about our post 2026 guidelines, how do we manage the basin? Met and was supposed to have some information in December. But with the administration change, that has changed. But they're still going through the NEPA process. So you can go to the BOR's website, the Bureau of Reclamation, and see the four different alternatives that are being studied as part of NEPA. There's also a no alter, a no change alternative as well that's part of that NEPA process. And more to come once the new administration and new commissioner for the Colorado River System is appointed on those areas. But feel free to familiarize yourself with some of those discussions between the Upper Basin and the Lower Basin states. And then also, our Metropolitan Planning Organization met today and elected new officers. I remain as the chair. Councilmember Campbell has been elected as the vice chair. And then District 3 Supervisor has been elected as the secretary and treasurer. And once again, we thanked Supervisor Johnson for his outgoing service and named today Buster Johnson Day. So those are the updates I have from those two committees. Are there any other updates? Yeah, Councilmember Diaz?
I just want to thank everyone for the hospitality since I second meeting here and wish everyone a staff and all my fellow council members and mayor Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11 is our future meetings. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, January 14, 2025 at 5:30 PM. It's a regular meeting. Our meeting that was scheduled for December 24 has been canceled. So our next meeting again is Tuesday, January 14 at 5:30 PM. It will be a regular meeting. Item 12, are there any future discussion items? All right, seeing none, motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Be kind. We'll see you next time. Happy holidays and have a happy new year. Thank you.